Yeah.
Slide it back over, you know?
Yep.
All right. This town and vinyl having board of selectmen meeting for Tuesday, June sixth, two thousand twenty-three to order. Roll call Jake Thompson, Leslie Dyer, Don Young, myself, M. Ali, Ardu Stratten, Town Manager and Elizabeth Bunker, Deputy Town Clerk, taking minutes. The agenda, I believe, one addition under communications from the Waldo Community Action Partners. And we approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor. Approve the minutes from the May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
So.
Second, all those in favor.
Oh, Stain, that wasn't you.
Number four, approved and signed treasurers warrants number forty-nine. Still moved. All those in favor. All right, we are going to move on to nine. C. So that we can speak with Dave and then correct it. Am I right?
I can live.
Does anyone want to ask? Anything specific?
I want to say thank you.
Yes.
Can they hear us?
I don't know. David, can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you. So. So, thank you for having us and and we appreciate the opportunity to have been able to work with the town on this. This is, I think, one of two favorable Supreme Court decisions that that the town has gotten. The the other kind of long winding procedural case that we were involved in a few years ago involved the a a shoreland zoning violation where there was a guest house or a an oil shed that had been converted to a guest house. And so I know for the most part, the town seeks to avoid litigation and you've been relatively successful in that. And this was one of those that we were unable to kind of avoid the litigation and it and it's nice to get a favorable outcome in the end.
Yes.
Well, this is final. There's no, no way they can appeal it or take it anywhere else.
Um, yes, there's a two-week period where they can seek reconsideration from the main Supreme Court. So we're still within that reconsideration period. There and in theory, there is the ability to petition the United States Supreme Court for review if they think there's some sort of a federal claim. But there hasn't really been that here. So what I would expect is that, you know, I think we have about another week in that reconsideration period. Reconsideration is is very rarely granted, and so it's usually not sought. And I suspect they probably won't seek reconsideration, but there's no way to really know that for another week. And then this will be final. There are a few pending appeals at the State Board of Property Tax Review that involve subsequent tax years. And that those have all been on hold and the state board has been asking for us to keep them prized of how the main Supreme Court decides this case. And so I've reached out to the attorney for the for the taxpayer who was going to check with his his client. I suspect those will all get dismissed. It doesn't happen automatically, but it won't. It won't take very much to get them dismissed, I think, because although they involve subsequent tax years and in theory, different tax years can stand on their own. The only year in which they actually sought an application was the year that the law court here ruled on. And so the other appeals were kind of there as placeholders. If they had prevailed, they'd argued that they, the town should have considered it as if they had renewed the application each year. So that's very long-winded way of saying, yes, I think this will be the the end. But there are still a few little things that have to happen to make that actually be the end.
That's what I was hoping your answer would be. So if they did get, sorry, what was it, a review or reconsideration?
Reconsideration. They can essentially, it's asking the law for to change their mind or change their decision. It was pretty uncommon. It's usually you have to assert that they that they misunderstood or or missed some major issue.
So my, just playing devil's advocate, if if for some reason that was granted and it went back. Does that mean that they are then exempt? And would we still need a ruling on if they're actual owner? Because that was kind of where I was hoping we would get a decision on this because I even if they were considered an exempt entity, I don't see how they can claim that they're an owner because it's not, they don't own the property. I know they're leasing it, but it doesn't. Not the same. It's not the same, exactly.
Yeah, so I I would agree with that. I think, again, speculating on what the basis of reconsideration is, is a little premature. The the ownership issue was before the main Supreme Court. And so if they the way reconsideration works, it's a pretty summary process and someone can ask, it's usually denied within a week or two without briefing. The court can ask for briefing. It would be theoretically possible for the court to, you know, if they said they wanted reconsideration on whether they're a scientific organization, the court could in theory say, okay, we reconsidered that. We think you are a scientific organization, but you don't own the property. You just lease it. And so you're not entitled to the exemption. I think it's more likely that this decision stands and that the main Supreme Court is then has then been silent on whether the the lease issue alone would be disqualifying. In that context, the assessors decision is on that issue is left undisturbed. And so I I think the outcome there would be and and we would advise the town treat long-term leases or really any leases as not ownership for the purpose of tax exemption.
Okay, great. Well, I had. Anyone else?
No, that's over, just like I'm sure they're glad.
Yes, again, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Hope hopefully you don't ever see us again.
And that's in this.
In this capacity.
Well, we're happy to serve in this role when needed. And and I know that the town tries pretty hard to avoid meaning to take things to litigation and we appreciate that as well. So. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much. All right. We'll move back to five communications. The first one A is New Oak Mid Coast. Anybody questions or comments on that?
It was the thank you letter.
Yeah, same thing on five B from W C A P. So if there's nothing else on that. Move on to six speakers from the floor. All right.
Don't be choose.
Run number six, speakers from the floor. Anything? Okay. We'll move on to seven, committee and department reports and appointments, seven A, committee and board appointments, term expirations.
Did I mark Eric Davis on you?
Says yes.
Yes.
Yeah, on the cemetery.
Yeah, I just got a hold of him today. So he is a yes.
And on the budget committee.
Committee and cemetery.
Okay. So do we need a motion to reappoint everyone with a why?
Yes.
Do we need to go through them individually and say all the names or just?
I hope not.
I will make a motion that we reappoint those listed on the board and committee terms expiring six two thousand twenty-three sheet with a Y next to their name.
Seven.
All those in favor.
Wasn't too many. What about the ones that they didn't get back for? So they're just in limbo then.
Yep, I didn't hear back from.
Yeah, there was only three people I saw.
And Cheryl.
Yeah. Uh, seven B, wooded and current status report.
Do you have any questions?
When did you say the compacters were coming? Last meeting, you said you said something, but I forgot.
Um, let's say the sixth next week.
Next week, okay. I was up there yesterday and it looked like all the paving was done correct or yeah.
Need to get the fence in.
And the compact of very.
With the compacters, electrical work, not much left.
Yeah, no, it looked pretty close to being done, didn't it? I mean, it was a lot better than two weeks before that when I was up there.
Yeah.
When all of a sudden done? Um, I heard that for people who were throwing trash, that it would be one car at a time. Is that accurate?
I don't think so. Okay.
Looks like you could get like three up there right now. I mean.
Yeah, that was the plan.
It was supposed to be multiple.
Just a nasty rumor that went around.
When I was up there, like you could back up like beside kind of beside each one, then up to each one, like it looked like there was.
Yeah.
More room than.
They're supposed to be.
But that's just the way it looks. It's not finished.
It'll be one way in, one way out.
You mean one person can come in the gate at a time?
Yeah, one person would be able to back up to the container.
The demo, I don't think more than one person can pull it back into that demo container, but that's nothing different.
Right. No, do you do you mean just trash?
Yeah.
No, certainly we didn't plan it that way.
Good.
Awesome.
I met with Gabe and Brent this morning. We're hoping to get all of the easements recorded that we have as we speak, they've been sent to the registry of deeds and finalize the plans and get those to EDA and get approval and, you know, hopefully they will be speedy in their review. We can get it out to bid. So, you know, we still have some issues to deal with, but we're moving along.
Yeah. Any other questions? Move on to seven, C, wastewater's report.
Pat is here.
I just, I wanted to talk to you because I don't know that you all even know how we operate and all that. There's not a department. This is talking now about the swap shop. And it's very quickly, the origination of it came out of wastewaterers. It was one of the goals when that committee was active, doing all kinds of things like the compactors and composting. From that committee, A, Lear and I had working on the swap shop and Heather Squires joined the committee and we just approved Amy and me, I think, for reupping tonight.
And Heather.
And Heather. And we kind of need to stay active as a wastewater's committee, even though we're not functioning as we're used to. The purpose of it was to rewrite the ordinance, I think, and just somewhere else. Because we need a little authority. If we have, one of one of our things was, we have some volunteers that pull right up to the front door and leave their car there for the whole time the swap shop's open. So we need to be able to say no, park a couple of doors away for people to unload and load. So we make some decisions and being, having the name as a wastewater gives us a little authority for that. It's not that it's a big authoritarian business. So we are all volunteers and I just wanted to give you some statistics for this year that we had five hundred and twenty-seven volunteer hours since January first from fifteen different people, including four students. They worked and came back with some extra time from that program in the school where they had to do less. They had to find somewhere to work. Three people gave sixty-seven percent of that time, though. So pretty winter run was pretty quarterly, three solid people. Even in the winter, we got donations of over two hundred and fifty dollars. So that comes into the town office and that helps offset when we've been up to take trash to the dump and that amount of fees for the six months was ninety-eight dollars. So we're ahead. You're still paying taxpayer dollar for electricity. So we're water. We do have a toilet, which is very nice. And a monitor heater in the sorting room. So there are some expenses that I don't know what they are, and I don't think kind of not talking about them. Is that right?
It's not very much. I mean, it's an operating budget for the net factory building.
Yeah.
We did have some other costs besides the dump fees, which are very ticket. Sometimes they're volunteers. And if you don't know, they if they're good enough to go to the mainland to go to whatever. And volunteers usually take that. Some volunteers are if they take two hundred and seventy pounds of stuff, they get a half a berry ticket, which I would make it cheaper to take it to the mainland and get it to the dump. And so far this year, we've taken almost two tons of clothing. So it's hard to put a number on it, but I I know the building is going to be going. I will get you true fiscal year numbers if that I can get together at the end of the month. So that's in the records, but when you're talking about the the net factory coming down and whatever's going to happen there, I'm keeping swap shop in mind because I think the values of the community is pretty immense.
I agree. It was a little over two thousand dollars total for the heat, electric sewer and water.
Last year or like year to date?
That's year to date this year through through May thirty-first.
Okay, yeah, that's.
It's not going to be much more like two hundred bucks a month, maybe.
Well, it's not. It's probably a minimum, it's a minimum water, right? It's the minimum water, the minimum sewer that you could.
Right.
Disconnect it all. I don't know. You can get out of it.
And I think we'd be paying that anyway.
Yeah, well, you'd be paying the minimum regardless whether they're using it or not.
Yeah.
I think it's great. Girls do a great job. Yeah. No, not just girls, but.
If in the future that building is torn down, something else is put up and the swap shop can't go there. Have you entertained any ideas of where it would go?
No, like you don't want to spend any money, right? We don't want to build a
Right.
Building.
We don't have any place to build it anyway.
It is massive. We have way more stuff than is going to fit in a trailer at some obscure place. I don't even know how we way it is today. I don't know how we run it that way.
Okay.
A place that would work with is Kenny and Luther's office.
We're not doing that. Kenny will be up there if you're listening. We're not going to do that.
But that would, that would be an ideal size, I think, you know.
That type of space is what you would need to have that. Okay.
Be more restrictive on what we could accept, or we have to move it faster.
Yeah.
Move it out faster.
Do you think the location downtown is better than?
In a lot of ways, yes.
All right. Well, so that's something that needs to be thought of.
It's like the size of the old Walmart in Brooklyn.
I mean, maybe that, maybe that's where it goes on the bottom floor of the new buildings, being the floodplain and.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Wouldn't be residential.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So I know cars were talked about being there, right? Because this stuff got wiped out. Yeah, it's trash. Or not salvageable or some of it might be, but it's going to be somewhere anyway.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good question.
Yes.
I just, I I think the swap shop is super valuable for the island. And so I hope the selectmen consider spending money if necessary to keep it at least as good as it is, no matter what happens to the.
I don't, I don't think anyone on this board thinks we shouldn't have it. And I, from what I can tell, most of the people in the town feel the same way. So if we had to, as a town, pay for something to keep it going, I don't think that would I don't think there'd be a lot of objection to it. So. But I think where it's located now, if it could stay in that spot with whatever goes up there in the future, I don't I don't think that's a bad idea either. So.
I agree.
Well, there's been no decision made.
There's been no, no, there's been nothing to be, that's still very early stages on what's going to be done with that site. So.
I don't want anyone thinking that. No, there's not any decisions.
No, there have not been.
Or I'll be discussed. I mean, there's a bunch of things out in the ether, but there's not.
Nothing in a committee.
Even close to.
Exactly.
Those are just time.
Yes. Thank you. Eight, all business, award mowing contracts.
Well, what I did, I, what I did is looked at the budget and what we have in the budget. You asked me to get some references is what we called it. So Bruce gave us several names. I did talk with Danny Ames. Who was the other one? Jim Clayder, I I spoke with, and there were several other names that he gave us that I, but I didn't speak with any of them. I don't see any reason not to award it. You know, it's a seven thousand dollar difference and that's what we have in our budget. So to be fiscally responsible.
Is there any thoughts, discussion?
Take a motion. I would give Bruce the gun, reach, throwing the.
Yeah, here's the one at the bottom. Yeah, the one bottom involved. Moved toward the mowing, trimming, lawn care, maintenance for town cemeteries and other town properties contracted Bruce Groming for the fiscal year, June first, twenty twenty-three to June thirty of twenty twenty-four, any receipt or proof of liability insurance and workers comp or presumption of independent contractor status. I will modify that. Just I think you meant sage and lie first. I think you said June first.
Oh, sorry.
I will second that motion. All those in favor. David, apologies, you didn't get the agreement this year, but you are welcome to submit for next year as well. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Nine, new business, a review town leases which include Indian Creek, Footbridge, Rockland Animal Hospital, charity appeal and the third is. Are there any major changes in any of my, I read them, but I couldn't see that there was any difference.
I changed the dates to be updated, but.
And there's no no reason to believe that the other sides aren't agreeable to these same leases, right? I mean, you changed Indian Footbridge one pretty significantly.
Right. Yeah, this reflects.
Years ago. No, I saw all that. It looked like it was the same to me. I wasn't a hundred percent sure. I didn't have last year's till.
Yep. Well, I don't.
I'm still, I don't even have a lease with the estate of George Lewis. I I'm in ongoing contacts with Lisa Lewis, who is George's daughter. So I don't know what's going to happen with that one. That one actually has all of your signatures on there. The other ones have just, if you could just authorize me to sign. You know, the Earl Hamilton Charity Appell and Rockland Animal Hospital. Those just have my name on to sign.
So those, the charity appelle and Rockland House, but those are the ones that are in the fire hall, correct?
Correct.
And they're all up to date, paid.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's usually the only.
He usually pays a hedge.
No, I usually that's the only. Which is better than the previous ten, if you didn't pay. Pay all at once.
I make a motion that we allow Marjorie to sign all four leases on our behalf. Second thing.
I think I think it's just the three, the third.
That's fine. I can, we can just change.
All right. And that second is correct.
Makes it easier.
All those in favor. It's going to be interesting to see what happens with their release.
Yeah, I got a.
That's all.
Who's the executor? Is that Lisa?
I don't know who the executor of George's. Well, I would assume that it's, you know, they're working with an attorney, an attorney called me and asked me for some information. So I'm assuming that Jared was trying to work through everything, but they haven't prohibited us from using it. So I guess that's good. Yeah.
No, this is good news.
Enjoy.
For now.
Yeah, for now.
All right, we'll move on to nine B, old fire hall painting, Mary Tabitha Fund appropriation.
Okay, so in addition, as I wrote, you know, the bid was twenty-four thousand. I don't know if you recall or not. Plus any labor and additional costs for supplies, I guess you call it, the the clavards that we had to replace. So that ended up being five thousand dollars. I don't know if you had any chance to go down there and look, but a lot of the clavards on the backside of the building were torn off and replaced. Everything's painted and I decided to also do the interior, which isn't included in this amount. That was another bill that I'm just going to pay out of operating. I think it came out really good. I'm really happy that it's done finally, but I would like to take up to twenty-seven thousand out of the Mary Talbot funds and I need an appropriation or a vote motion and vote and select them to do that.
So we didn't have this in the budget? Thought we did.
There's, okay, so in addition, in addition to what was in the operating budget, there is thirteen thousand in a reserve fund and we had talked about just using the reserve funds.
Okay.
And we still can do that.
Okay.
If you don't want to take that much out of Mary Talbot, I think there's thirteen thousand, one fifty in the reserve fund. But I just felt like if we're going to appropriate money out of the Mary Talbot fund to just use that. There is ninety, almost ninety-five thousand in the Mary Talbot trust.
There is reserve fund. Should we use that first of all?
It's sure, if you want to.
I guess it depends on which one's getting higher interest rate. Well, they must be all on the same.
Yeah.
Well, the trust, I would think, would be separate from the reserve fund.
Yeah, no, but I'm assuming they're on the same bank.
They're all around four percent or a touch higher.
Okay.
Um, here's.
We have it in the reserve for that reason. So.
We should have used at least twelve thousand out of the reserve and then fifteen thousand out of Mary Talbot, maybe and leave a thousand.
Yes, in the reserve.
In the reserve, in case something comes up, or do you want to go ten thousand out of the reserve and leave that other amount?
I mean, either, either one is fine.
There's about thirteen thousand, five fifty total in the reserve.
Yeah, so you could do the ten and fifteen.
Then ten and seventeen. That probably, that seems more.
Probably your funds are for a reason. Right, that's part of why we have is so we can pay. All right. Yeah, I I so I move to pay the Eldon Services invoices for work done at the old fire hall totaling twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-three from the remaining operating funds in the twenty twenty-three budget. And the following amounts from the Mary Mary Talbot Trust Fund and the Reserve Fund. So seventeen thousand from the Mary Talbot Trust Fund and ten thousand from the Reserve Fund. So I can, all's in favor. We already did see nine D ambulance, posed ninety-one proposed billing rate increase.
This originated from our billing agent, our medical reimbursement services. They didn't feel that our billing rates were high enough. So we looked at our, you know, our current rate is the first column. The second column is what MRS.
What is M R I?
That is medical reimbursement services. That's who does our billing and collections for our ambulance.
I just wasn't sure.
And then we got some statistics, both from MRS and from Ryan did some work for us. So the third column is what we feel is consistent with other local communities, and that's what we're recommending for ambulance rates.
Okay. I mean, I'm guessing the mileage isn't a huge deal out here where it's a small island anyway, so it's a little bit more than the recommended. Rate, it's not gonna affect.
It shouldn't be that big.
Communities like Cape Elizabeth, Cumberland, Raymond, Wyndham, they're. Eighteen dollars or more, so we kinda looked at the average.
Their communities are probably a lot bigger than ours, as what I'm saying, like that isn't gonna make a huge deal, the mileage rate.
And I'm kind of, you have an understanding of what that means, the eighteen dollar mileage? I think it's. Their transport.
It's from the residence. To wherever they take them, the ferry, the airport, lobster boat, it's from the residence.
Is that eighteen?
I think so.
Not to the final destination, but just to.
Well, like if you took them to the airport, then South Tomston's gonna pick them over there, so you're only. It's just from pickup to drop off.
Right, so pick up to drop off on the island. Anything taking you over is.
Ambulance.
Got you, okay, got you.
So you get a separate ambulance bill from South Tomston.
Or PIA for your airplane or for the ferry for your boat.
Or if they just take you there.
Some municipalities charge a lot more for non-residents than for residents, is there anything like that?
We don't have.
I don't see that here. Yeah, I think. I think that would be the, the, the non-resident doing awful lot of this town taxes as a rule. Well, I wouldn't see how you could say non-resident, we have to say like non-taxpayer or something, because they're funding it too, sort of. But that my point is, I don't think you can discriminate.
Come and rent a house for a week, they, you know, but that would be ridiculous to try to figure that out.
I think it'd be very difficult with the billing. To figure out.
I know, I see where you're going with it, I, I just, it seems kinda hard to. It seems like it might be more worth.
Yeah, the people alone would be.
Even if we could figure out a way to do it. Probably wouldn't cover it. Someone's gonna sue us, I feel like.
And the, and the billing company isn't gonna know.
No, they're not. And they probably only have a certain amount that they allow anyway. Can they make the person cover it after that, right? Cause like Maine State Ferry Service is gonna try to charge an island a resident rate and then. Well, it was a Maine state rate, right, and it had to show your license.
I think the MRS recommended rate took into consideration what insurance is paying, that was part of there.
Okay, can I make the motion? Yeah. I'll make the motion to increase the town vinyl having ambulance rates to the following miles, eighteen. BLS rate seven hundred, ALS rates one thousand, ALS two rate fourteen hundred, BLS non four hundred, ALS non five hundred.
Second.
All those in favor? And I hope I never have to pay any. Me too, same here.
Well, my travel, hour miles from my house to the school when Steven's lights. Across the street.
Alright, we're gonna go to nine D two ambulance billing write-off.
Really isn't funny.
So again, I'm just trying to clean up things that haven't been dealt with for many years. The allowance for doubtful accounts on ambulance hasn't been adjusted or amended since twenty-fourteen. So. These are all of the, the hundred and nine thousand is the total of runs. That were billed or dealt with. By the previous. Agent TG Higgins. And I spoke with Darlene, who handles the bookkeeping for the ambulance billing. And I spoke with this medical reimbursement services and. The conclusion I came to is that there's really no way that we can go back and build these and. I'm asking that you just make a motion to write all of this off, I'm gonna do it over the course of. I've spoken with the auditor for the twenty-twenty-two. Audit and we're gonna increase the allowance for doubtful accounts and then in twenty-twenty-three. I'm just gonna get rid of all of these, uh, and the old ambulance receivables. If you would agree.
Do you have any idea of how many accounts? I see it says sixty-three people are deceased, is that roughly like half of it or?
It is.
A hundred and something accounts?
Yeah.
It's, it sounds about fifty, at least fifty percent.
Well, when I spoke with the man from Medical Reimbursement Services, he said that. Unfortunately, this, this kinda thing isn't unusual, he gave an example that I wrote here of Wyndham, who had about three hundred thousand in receivables. And they did, the town went out on their own and tried to send bills and collect and they didn't. Get one penny from anybody and it just caused a lot of hate and discontent in the community. So it was just a total loss and they ended up writing everything off anyway. I don't know what would happen, but I tend to agree that I, I don't think that we should try to send out bills again for any of this stuff.
These numbers are over and above what, obviously what the insurance company pays for, so that's all out of the, what we picked up is. People who couldn't pay.
Well, I think what happened with TG Higgins is that they were not. Operating as they should have been, if, if, like a better way to put it. You know, and so their collection rate was not what it should be.
On the insurance companies.
From the, from, and you know. Person.
Sounds like we should go after TG Higgins.
They went out of business, I believe.
We're too late. Okay.
I mean, I just, I don't see the point in carrying these receivables.
No, if it's been this long, especially you're talking. The oldest one is ten years. Dead out of a hundred and something.
It's a lot of money.
There isn't, no choice. We couldn't send it to a collection agency, but that. But then you only get like ten percent, they get their ass, so. And the people on the list will. Get a hundred thousand phone calls. Exactly.
And we'll have to pay the collection agency and.
No, you just. You just sell it to.
I think we ought to.
You're done with it. I make a motion, we moved right off ambulance going from two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty-one deemed uncollectible. For the total amount of one hundred nine thousand, five hundred sixty-three dollars and seven cents that were originally built to TG Higgins Company.
Second.
All those favor. Hopefully our new company does a much, much better job. You're gonna end up paying for it anyway, because money that the ambulance service didn't get paid for, so we've already, we're all gonna have to pay for it anyway. Why don't they put lanes on the mouth? Cause obviously there's usually property involved somewhere along the way. I mean, going forward, I'm not talking about now.
This company put a lien on. Other somebody's property because of undue ambulance bills, if I understand your question.
Right, why couldn't they? I'm talking about in the future, if we go forward.
A property tax lien? It'd be illegal to do that.
If anything, they take you to small claims court, correct?
Right, it would be either a collection agency or small claims court, so small claims court is, well, that's the next discussion.
Some of these might not, might be too high for a small claims.
From what little I've done of this wall, if Darlene isn't available, this, the new company that MRS seems very. Diligent about their billing and about getting stuff to Thomas Agency for collection, they've been very helpful.
Well, some of that stuff in two thousand fourteen, if they haven't gotten.
They can't touch anything that TG Higgins did before.
Some of that stuff is more than. Seven years old, if they haven't had a bill in the last. I can't remember what it is, from my business law class, that was twenty years ago, but there is, there is a certain time. Some of those people probably haven't had a bill in like three years, so it's probably, you couldn't even send them one now, or they wouldn't have to respond to it, I think.
I think it's a year, was it on there?
I think it was on there.
When you add in the sixty-three people listed are deceased, it's also very difficult to build some money. That's, it's already gone, so, yeah. With, um, we'll hope that the next time it's more like five hundred dollars, you know, one person again instead of. And so there's fewer ambulance runs, less people. I doubt that. Alright, then we'll move on to report of town manager.
So I've also been working with Elizabeth on the transfer station overdue accounts. And we sent out some notices previously that, uh, just like the overdue notice. Which is the postcard, it says, you couldn't charge on your account until the balance had been paid, it was.
At the transfer station, okay.
And so then recently I sent out a letter saying. That if they don't pay, I'm gonna take them to small claims court and that's gonna add another, it costs seventy dollars just to send a case to small claims. Plus the, you have to have them served by the deputy, so it could be anywhere from seventy to a hundred dollars that would be added to their bill. So the letter just said, you know, pay up or we're gonna take you to small claims court and that's gonna add between seventy and a hundred dollars to your bill. So, you know, I've been pretty successful in the past with small claims court, usually they don't even show up and then you win. So.
Then you have to collect.
Then you have to collect, but we've been successful in the past with some old personal property taxes that. We collected through small claims court, so it's worth a shot, but I don't know, I mean, this isn't anywhere near. The amount of money that we were talking with the ambulance.
What kind of money we don't have?
I mean, these are people that, I mean, they only owe like three hundred bucks, you know, I, we just want them to pay their bill, they keep charging. And their, their bill keeps going up.
Right.
But they don't. Yeah, we just want them to pay. Um, do you have any questions for me on anything?
I think.
What's this, are we gonna talk about this?
Oh, that's Millie, well, Millie said. Can you put this on the agenda and it was Monday when we got this? And so we had.
I didn't see it on there.
We had already sent the agenda out, so then I responded to her. So. My suggestion to her was to come up with a more specific project. And then bring it to the selectmen for approval and to have an estimate, I mean, one of, you know, one of the suggestions. Is to just take the whole fifteen miles of paving and put it out to bid, but I, my experience is that. You have, you know, my experience is that you develop a project and then. Get an estimate of what that's gonna cost and get your funding together. So I suggested that we just focus on a specific project instead of. Throwing a fifteen mile paving project out to bid when we know we don't have the money available. It was just a suggestion, so she said that she was trying to do a little bit more work. And try to get some, I suggested that she contact Main Local Roads, who has always been very helpful to me in the past. That's a, it's a DOT organization and they. Their purpose is to help municipalities, public works departments, they do a lot of trainings. Sessions for public works departments to work with them, they're always very adept at what the. Current prices are for hot mix, for instance, and you know, what the average cost for a mile of paving is and things like that. Uh, which would be very helpful in getting a project together, we still do have. If, if it passes at town meeting, we have some, we'll have some money in the road reserve. But we also have that contingency of money that was approved to borrow. Cause there was, there was seven hundred and fifty thousand approved at town meeting for paving, but you only borrowed two hundred and sixty-four, I think it was. So the remaining amount is still out there and available to bond. So. If you, for instance. Figure that you have about five hundred thousand dollars. Available that we could throw to, you know, not throw together, but you know what I mean, get, we could.
Get the ball rolling on something.
Yeah, yeah, so for instance, if there was a focus on, you know, what could we do for this five hundred thousand dollars? And focus on that as a project, or she can put some other project together to bring to the board, I'm not opposed to something else. Certainly, you know, she wants to put a, something together to bring.
I mean, I think. The best way is you get a cost to do all of it all at once and do it all at once, because it will be cheaper. But then you're also. They're all gonna come around at the same time when they need work again, so. Then do you think about it and should we stagger it just so that you have maintenance, not all at the same time? Do it all at the same time, be done with it. Yeah, I agree, but. I think instead of doing it. Well, maybe not this time, you could do it all at once, but instead of trying to do one section every like seven years, you should try and do a bigger section every. Other year and break it up into like three sections. Yeah. Kinda like the. You know, out of town. Close to town and in town or something, you know. Right. And try and have one of those years always line up with. The DOT, so you can piggyback on that, and that, I think they're every seven to ten years.
Well, when we have the discussions with the next phase of the downtown project, that's when we're having the discussions with DOT about their plans and. Hopefully we can maybe combine a project, you know, we paved Main Street, combine a project with DOT. I mean, that's just a thought.
Now that, this is all, I'm just putting it out there, like.
Makes sense.
I mean, maybe this time you do have to, because all the roads are all graph at once, but then in the future, if you could just, instead of. Doing a mile every year, do say two or three miles every three years or something. Hold on, a banner.
Our roads don't deteriorate uniformly.
Right.
So if you do a big section, you're gonna be maintaining it piece by piece.
That's true. I mean, I think just because it's an island and we have to bring everything out, the more you can do all at once, the cheaper it will be in the long run. And then what you have done, then you have to work on regular maintenance, that you don't have to have these big projects. Every ten to fifteen years. It's just getting a reliable cost. Is not gonna be easy, because. I think the last time Andy's was doing it, it was like. It was like two hundred fifty thousand dollars a quarter mile, so it was, you know, a million bucks to do a mile. But I could be wrong.
It would really, really.
So, you're talking about fifteen miles. Is it fifteen million, is it twenty million, is it less than that? Who knows? But it's. It's gonna have to be done. Okay, any other questions on that? Move on to, Marjorie, do you have anything else?
Um, no, thank you.
For the members. I just have one thing, someone brought up to me about the dump. Now that it's all redone, if there was ever a chance that we can change the day, someone thought it should be Saturday and Sunday and Wednesday and Thursday instead of. Sunday and Monday, they just thought it might be more convenient, so I don't know, I said I wasn't around when they set the four dump days, I don't know. So.
My recollection is that a long time ago that Kenny wanted to, when his son was playing sports and things. He wanted to have a Saturday off to spend with this.
Well, like a lot of people said in the summer where the fishermen have Sundays off, that the dump's extra busy on Sunday. And a lot of people have Saturday and Sunday off where the lobster and that might be easier, you know, if it was Saturday and Sunday, but. Someone just asked me why the dump days were like that and I said I have no idea and asked if they could be changed and I said I have no idea.
I also know a lot of the turnovers for rentals are Saturdays.
Or Fridays.
Or Fridays, so.
I don't know, if that's, if that's an option to ever bring up to change the dump days.
But then they would be giving up their week, whole weekend, every, every weekend, they would be working Saturday, Sunday, Saturday, you know. Is that fair to them, to the workers, employees to.
Take away their whole weekend.
Right, because they might have things they wanna do on a Saturday.
So, well, do you want me to talk to the staff and see what their feelings are on it, or do you wanna just?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Do you have a proposal? What's your proposal?
They, we're just asking why it has to be Sunday and Monday, why it couldn't be, I mean, maybe it doesn't have to be Sunday at all, maybe it could be. Saturday, Friday, Saturday, Monday, Tuesday or something, I mean, we're just seriously. It should be Sunday though, with the fishermen in particular. I mean, I was saying, they were wondering why it wasn't. Or maybe, just be, maybe is there a chance that they could be open? Or maybe, just be, maybe is there a chance that they could be open more days and not as long? Instead of starting at eight to, or could they be open from? Nine to three and be open.
Monday through Friday.
Right, or something like that, or be open Sunday, Sunday. Monday and then like maybe Wednesday, Thursday, Friday or something like that, split those three days, you know, just a little bit different, just make it a little bit more convenient or.
Well, you just need to put a proposal out there.
Well, just ask them.
Yeah, I would rather hear from the employees first, what they think, if they think there's a better schedule.
Like maybe, is there a chance that they could be open more days if they work last or?
Plus, we may see um. Something different.
Well, I mean, I don't know.
Once the dump is up and running.
I think they like to be closed on Tuesday, maybe because that's the day that the truck comes out to grab. The stuff, I don't, see, I don't know the whole.
The whole schedule.
In's and outs of, I just said I would bring it up, I have no idea what the schedule is the way it is and if it can be changed.
Aren't you glad you did?
No, but I mean, I, I know that this trash.
My recollection was that Kenny wanted to have a Saturday off, this is, this is when his kids were younger and he wanted to participate in sports with his son. His and his kids. That's my recollection.
I know if, if I was one of the employees, I would not wanna move to Saturday, Sunday, cause my entire weekend is gone every week, so.
No, but maybe there's a chance that they could be open Wednesday, Thursday and Friday because. I think that was kind of the whole thing, like Friday and Saturday to be closed is. When people are trying to clean houses and switch over things in the summertime is. You know, a lot of the rentals, they have to clean them out and they have to hold on the trash.
Maybe there can, maybe there can be a seasonal.
Maybe they have, maybe there's a way they can get a key to go in there.
Let's, let's talk to them first and then.
They work four tens.
Four tens, okay, so maybe they would, might wanna consider breaking some of those days. Another day and cutting the hours back, you know, they still gonna get their forty hours, but. Maybe work it out in a different way. Just run it by and see what they think.
Yeah, there's no, no hurting talking about it.
Right. I don't have any.
I think a lot of it comes down to a lot of the Mondays and holidays that they're closed, so if you miss Sunday and Monday.
Wednesday, yeah.
So I think that might have.
This happened to me before, but that's my own fault, my, my ears.
Maybe they could just open Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Sunday.
I don't know, let's get some feedback on, um anyone done?
I'd like to have us consider adopting a both modem policy on major projects. This is typically down in business where we, what we get, let's say a three hundred thousand dollar project or that, once the project is done. Review how well we did within budget. Uh look at any, how well do we get what we wanted? What we do different next time? And we could have a couple of the selectmen that'll be on the committee to review and with the whatever. And maybe we could, you know, pick personnel to do it, but really just a review to make sure we got what we wanted. And do we get what we needed and did we stay within budget?
Then if there's ever a contractor that didn't do it, would be, we would know there was, you know.
With the consultants, whatever, we, we have a chance to review and then decide how we go in the future. So I'd make a proposal, we, we, we put this together and then we, we vote on the. Over the once we have something in front of us.
Okay. I, I have no objections to, I'm, I'm almost done. The same here, so I'm not, I'm not gonna speak to the rest of the board, but it seems like a good idea, I mean, especially when we have, we have. Eight dollar projects, five hundred thousand, whatever it is, it doesn't hurt to. Assess how the whole project went, if you're on budget, if you're not, then why, et cetera, et cetera, I mean, it, it does seem like a good plan.
It would seem appropriate to bring it up with the new board.
Yeah.
Don, if you wanna bring it back in July.
If you shall, if you have a proposal, then yeah, I would suggest.
No, I'm not quite ready on that, but I think.
Well, when you do.
Yeah.
Present it to the rest of the board, go from there, but I.
And you should take community, just remind, I mean, if there's complaints about it, you should. See why, if it's because they didn't look at the. Design of it and didn't complain about it before, which is what my guess would probably be ninety-nine percent of the time, but you know.
Yeah, you can wait too long to voice your complaints.
I have one more, Maggi, it has looked at the. Uh trees and bushes, they're impeding traffic and creating a hazard in certain cases. And I've talked to a couple of guys with their trucks and they're always complaining about mirrors and stuff getting banged up because they are getting limbs that overhang in the road. And I know Maggi's had a lot of concern and had, and talked with municipal, uh like what the organization is.
Main Municipal Association Legal Department.
Right.
Well, you were just asking me about one kind of scenario.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I'm more concerned about anything where you're driving a car up rock, you're gonna hit branches that will overhang in the road. Or there's a blind place where you can't see around the corner and have to have an accident. So I, if, if there's a question on that, I think we ought to be prepared to spend a few dollars and get a legal opinion on whether or not we can do this.
Well, what happened is I, when I. Asked Main Municipal about it, their answer was, uh correct me if I'm wrong, their answer was. Largely the same answer that Millie and I have been giving Donald about that specific bush. That it's a line of sight issue on Brighton, on the corner of Brighton and um East Main. You know, that we, we certainly have a right to eliminate obstructions and obvious. You know, if something's in the road, but we don't have a right to take down an ornamental bush. Uh this, one in particular is a flowering quince, so we just. We can't do that without the permission of the um property owner, so that was what Main Municipal reiterated. But um. If we're talking about overhanging branches, that's a different. Scenario, that's not the same scenario as a line of sight, a bush on a corner.
I just think we ought to have a good idea what our legal rights uh.
Oh, okay, so Donald's proposal is to ask our, you know, attorney that costs a hundred and seventy dollars an hour. And he, and what I, my answer to that was, I would just like two other selectmen to go along with that. Cause I don't wanna spend that kind of money on something that I think we're gonna get the same answer that we've already gotten. So I just said, you know, if you can just ask the board, bring it to the board and ask if you want me to go to. Um David Callan with that quest, same question. I think that, you know, please correct me if I'm wrong.
You're basically right on this.
Okay.
I don't understand why they would have a different answer than. The people you talk to at Main Municipal. I would think they would.
I don't think that they would based on my experience, but um certainly um. Donald has a right to bring something to the.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, I, I would be of the opinion that. They would give you the same answer, like is what you just said, that you can't see that the answer would be any different from David Callan.
Depends on what your goal is, I mean, if you want the attorney to get into the legal battle with a particular property owner. I'm, I'm not really sure.
I think this particular in situation. This is my opinion, it's gonna go by a case by case basis, that, that ornamental bush that's a line of sight. Sounds like we have an answer, you, we can't do anything about it without the property owner's permission. There's gonna be other scenarios where we can do something without their permission.
Right.
They might not like it, but we have to do it because it's a liability of the town if we don't make it a safe space, so.
Right.
I guess my only thing would be, maybe we find out. Suggestion, maybe we find out what's our liability if we. Determine there is a line of sight issue or a safety issue, we are not allowed to touch the plant, tree, whatever it is, without. Property owners' permission, what kind of liability is the town?
Well, I mean, we're largely protected because of the Main Tort Claims Act, but you know, for municipalities.
So if that's the case that I. Yeah, I don't, I don't know if there's much more we can do.
I mean, people sue for everything now, but municipalities are largely protected for things like that.
But we still have, we still have an obligation to do what's the right, the right thing, and I'm not sure ignoring it.
Is it just one bush you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about several of them, trees hanging over the, hanging over the street.
But that's a different, that's different.
Gotta be some.
I thought you could trim trees that are hanging down too low. On the, if you're driving on the main road.
Right.
And the branches are hanging down, uh certainly, I'm, I can't believe you can't trim them.
Well, I just like you have to, just straight down.
I don't know, I don't, uh, but anyway.
I guess. The way I'm thinking of it then is. Before we get lawyers involved on something that I don't know how much benefit's gonna buy the town. If we've gone through and made an assessment of all the danger spots and we've done everything the town can do. And then we've contacted property owners and they've said, no, we're not gonna do it.
Yeah.
We document all that and then it's, you know, it's kind of out of our hands. We've done all our due diligence, it's on the property owner at that point. Like, instead of getting the lawyers involved upfront.
Okay.
Now, it just seems like money we shouldn't spend right now.
I agree.
With many counties like down south where I can speak with. Knowledge, they have local audiences that actually tell you how far back you have to have anything. And how high it can be, and I don't know if Knox County or any county in Maine has it.
I don't yet, good question, I don't know.
I don't, I don't know, I'd have to research, I don't.
But there's gotta be, already gotta be somewhere out there where it says how, how much, like.
So basically, we have the ditch line.
Right.
We have to maintain our ditch line.
On both sides of roads to.
Right.
Feet.
And, and we can take down um trees and bushes within that ditch line. But we have to be careful, other than that, to at least work with a property owner to say, hey, I mean, especially if it's a bunch of alders. Usually if you just say, hey, can we take out this?
Yeah.
You know, the, the alders here, yeah, go for it, you know, but I remember one time. Uh we were doing some roadside uh maintenance and we took down a big maple tree. And uh. Wasn't good, anyway.
Well, I mean, there must be a height limit too, I mean, you can't go racist. Like.
You know, you can't go. You can't just.
I'm just thinking about our parents' house, how high those trees are, that stick out, they're clean, so.
Yeah.
Trucks don't hit them when they go under.
There's a limit to how much the town group can do with their equipment as well, I mean, they can't go take down.
Those trees are way away from the road, I'm just trying to buy them now that they're all leafed out and I was like, man, that's a big canopy. And it is over the road, but it's so high up that it doesn't bother.
It's not, not obstruction.
Right.
You just have to think about what you're doing. It can't be.
Sees you to ask forgiveness and permission.
Oh, gosh.
So many times that I've learned my lesson.
I mean, if you have it in, and you can cut a tree down to the ditch line and you do it and someone's mad. There isn't really much they can say about it, so.
Now, if you're within the ditch line and you're, if, and you've.
But if you wouldn't ask them, if, if you could do it, even though it's your legal right, they might say no, so.
Well, sometimes, you know, you wanna go a bit beyond the ditch line for, as a for instance. You know, to just take out, uh you know, do some roadside maintenance and really get it done. Um and those are the cases where you talk to the property owner and say, hey, do you mind if we go out to here and take out this? Bunch of alders, and usually they don't mind.
What about um obstructing a sidewalk, if you're walking and you can't walk on the sidewalk, you have to walk out around in the road? Because plants, can, can the town, can we trim them, okay?
I would reserve the right to look at it, but yeah, generally, yeah, we can take.
Well, sidewalk is town property, correct?
Because there's some places that you can't, you have to walk around this, around, you can't use the sidewalk.
My intent on this whole thing wasn't necessarily to spend money, my intent was to get us to do something which we haven't been doing. Cause everyone's been afraid to do anything, so my point is, these situations exist, they should be addressed.
Well, I guess I need to know, other than that one bush, I don't know where you're talking about, so.
I can name you, I can take you on a ride and show you a bunch of them.
Are any of them in the power lines? Because then you can talk to Fox Island and they can cut.
Right. As I mentioned before, we. We compile a list of the problem areas, we document what has been done or what has not been done. If we've done everything in the town's power and the property owners have been contacting, they say they're not gonna do anything about it.
Fair enough.
It's all, it's all done, you know, but well, the danger doesn't go away unfortunately, so there's no more.
That would be a town crew issue, right, if there's a overhang, yeah, so.
It's the.
If there's an issue somewhere, then.
She's gun shy right now.
Well.
Without some that.
She said the same thing at March, that. That. You ask the property owner, if they say no.
Then you just.
Your hands are tied.
Then you clean it back to the end of the ditch and that's as much as you can do, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we, we, the town does what it can do up to a point, and that's it.
Right.
And then it's on the property owner, so I, I still think. If you as a property owner are not trimming back trees or whatever instructions and making an unsafe. Roadway and an accident occurs, it's gonna be on, it could be on you for liability, so.
Well, I know like Patrick and UPS truck, there was roads that aren't town roads and he said, if you don't clear these back, I'm leaving your packages. At your mailbox and guess what, they cleaned their roads up, so you think.
Yes, exactly, there you go.
Maybe we need him to talk.
Anything else?
That's it. I had one more.
No, go ahead.
I did speak with the pankency people on, that wanna build the housing out here. And after talking in for, I think is worthwhile, just spend a little bit of time just talking to him. Cause I think there are some other options other than what we've been talking about already. I think it'd be worth our time to do that.
What other options these have, could he have?
I think, you know, one of the main concerns that all of us have is if he puts housing in here about. Is it gonna serve the island, the people that have, that need the housing? The elderly, some people just starting out, uh we're gonna need tradesmen in here because. A plumber and electricians are all, so we're trying to find housing for them, how do we do that? And if, if, are there some ways other than getting restricted grants or we lose all control, I think there might be. But I think it's worth having someone who really knows what they're talking about, talk to us and see, just explore some of these options.
We just, excuse me, did we have him come out once? Okay, I, I wondered if I was mistaken.
Last year, he came up.
Probably before Don, he was on the board.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I met him, he's a very nice guy, I liked, I liked him.
I think he came out last spring though.
Right, yeah.
And we had a little public meeting, so people could ask questions and, yeah.
But I know that one of the, one of the thoughts was to find property in the town. Uh village, whatever you wanna, however they wanna call it, yeah, that there's water and sewer.
Yeah, and they almost need to provide facilities.
But, you know, the town doesn't really have.
Not town owned land.
We don't have any land to say, yeah, you know, build the way, I don't. The only option I thought that they really were interested in was the net factory.
Margie said give them this place and build a very new place.
I know, Marjorie wants to do that.
Thinking out of the box.
No one's ever said it on record anywhere, you never said it, so this is one of my last, I didn't say it was a terrible idea. You could keep your slots up underneath and have the town.
Put a new.
Above it.
Historical society down.
And it is, this is town property.
No, no, I'm just, I'm thinking about something else, the last Patman proposal.
I'm just saying, no one's ever grown.
More streets for the social society better access, given that.
All right, all right, here we, here we. All right.
Take credit for.
Any.
It is town property.
That's all I can, that's all you got, all right. Pam?
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, all I'm gonna do is say uh. Thank you to everyone who's been on the board, who I've served with in the past and currently. Thank you to Marjorie, our town manager, thank you to Elizabeth, thank you to all of our town staff.
This is your last meeting?
Yes.
Other than town meeting.
Mine also. So, I echo what, I echo what Donald said, I say Andy too.
Thank you to Andy as well, thank you to. Everyone on the committees, everyone who works, volunteers their time to the town, um it is. It's been eye opening to be honest, to see how much people actually do that you don't hear about and you don't realize, and. I appreciate all that work that is done and I've tried to do my best while I've been on the board, um and I hope.
Done a great job.
Thank you.
Jake has too.
And yes, if circumstances are different, I probably would serve another term, but unfortunately they're not, so.
We'll get in the ship.
Thank you to everyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That was all I have.
Okay.
I move adjourn.
Second.
Oh, we already did.